Please, before we hear the first case, I have some guidelines to read, so everybody will bear with me. This is a public hearing, and we are the zoning board of adjustment for Putnam County, Florida. We operate under the authority of Articles 11 and 12 of the Land Development Code as amended. The primary responsibility of the board is to hear and decide appeals challenging final determinations made by the Planning and Development Services Department under the Land Development Code, and to hear and act upon requests for variances, special use permits, non-conforming use determinations, and preliminary development plans under the Land Development Code. The variance section I will skip because today we have a special use permit. A special use permit is special permission to use property in a fashion which the zoning classification of the property does not automatically permit. If we grant a special use permit, we may impose reasonable conditions on the use of the property, which must be satisfied if the special use permit is to remain valid. Unlike a change in the zoning classification, as a general rule, a special use permit applies only to the specific use requested in the application for special use permit. The standards we use in deciding whether or not to grant a special use permit are listed in Section forty-five dash one zero eight three of the Land Development Code. Procedurally, we will call each case by name and number. A member of the staff will briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will then take any comments from the applicant or their representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. Please direct all comments and statements to the board and not to other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized, come forward to the lectern, and identify his or herself by name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the board. This motion will be voted on by board members and become our final order. Any decision made by this board can be appealed to the circuit court. However, any appeal must be filed within thirty days after the Board of Adjustments has rendered the final order which is being appealed. Are there any questions? Before the first case is heard today, all those wishing to speak will need to be sworn in, so will the notary please administer the oath. Okay, before we hear the first case, we will then, which is case SUP twenty-three dash zero 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 seven, we will have a roll call for ex parte communication. Yes, I called Mr. Gillette my phone, and we talked briefly, and that was after a communique from the office, I guess, asking us if we wanted to make an appointment. I chose not to make an appointment, I went on my own.
Yes.
Madam Chair, what was the nature of your conversation?
The nature of my conversation was to see whether or not I needed an appointment to come visit, and I decided that I would go on my own and not visit, I mean not-
And that was the extent?
Right, and that was the extent of it.
Thank you. Madam Chair, have you heard anything, or seen, or read anything that would affect your ability to consider and decide this matter in a fair and impartial manner?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Ratliff, what was the nature of your communication?
Mr. Gillette is an acquaintance of mine because they live near me.
Have you talked to Mr. Gillette about this matter?
Yes.
That's come up, alright, what was the nature of your conversation?
Just simply, um, the type of, the type of business that they have there, and the animals that they take care of.
Do you, do you socialize with Mr. Gillette?
No, I haven't.
Do you have any sort of business relationship with Mr. Gillette?
No, I don't.
Have you heard, or seen, or read anything that would affect your ability to consider and decide this matter in impartial and fair manner?
No.
Ms. Ratliff, despite any conversations you've had with Mr. Gillette, are you capable of listening to this and once again deciding the matter in a fair and impartial manner?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much.
No.
Okay, at this time, I guess we're ready for staff and their report.
Afternoon, I am the intern for Planning and Development Services, and I will be presenting special use permit twenty-three dash zero 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 seven per LDC Section forty-five dash seventy-two E nineteen to allow wildlife pets. The applicant is Christopher Gillette. The property is located at one thirty-eight Charity Lane in Interlochen. The parcel number is zero nine eleven twenty-four zero 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 five zero 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 zero. It is approximately a forty point zero three acre lot located at the end of Charity Lane. The future land use category is agriculture, and the zoning district is agriculture. The property is largely vacant with a mobile home in the southeast corner of the parcel. The applicant intends to keep wildlife pets on-site to open and operate a wildlife sanctuary. The applicant is a media personality with extensive experience in the animal industry, and has demonstrated a strong professionalism and animal husbandry. Any enclosures that are built will be required to obtain permits through Planning and Development Services. The keeping of the animals would be subject to regulation by the Florida Wildlife Conservation Commission. Such regulation is required before such pets are brought to the property. These regulations include, but are not limited to, verification of one thousand hours of experience in a one-year calendar timeframe with Class One species, letters of reference verifying this, financial bonds, and U.S. Department of Agriculture permits. Here is an aerial view of the property, highlighted in orange. The future land use category, which is agriculture. The zoning, which is also agriculture. The flood zones. The wetlands located on the parcel. And the site plan for potential development. On this slide, there is the special use permit criteria. It is included in the packets that have been passed out to the board and our public record, and I will briefly go over each one. The use is consistent with the comp plan and meets all requirements. A detailed statement of the facts and policies demonstrating compliance or non-compliance shall be included in the final development order. And although this specific application may not constitute an agricultural use, wildlife pets are similar to the keeping of livestock, and it is defined as an allowed use for a special use permit. The use is allowed as a special use in the zoning district in which the property is located and will conform to all applicable regulations of this code and the zoning district in which it is proposed. We have cited the specific section of the LDC that allows wildlife pets. The special use will not adversely impact or unduly restrict the enjoyment of permitted uses in its surrounding area. Staff finds that this criteria is met. The special use will not substantially diminish or impair property values in the area, nor impede the orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for permitted uses. There's been no evidence presented to prove such information. Adequate access roads, onsite parking, and onsite loading and unloading berths and drainage have been or will be provided where required. This may not be technically required just for the keeping of wildlife pets, but if the applicant were to open the business, such improvements would be made. Adequate measures have been taken to provide ingress and egress to the property that are designed in a manner to minimize traffic impacts on local roads. The property has existing ingress and egress. Addition of wildlife pets is not expected to impose any additional traffic. Adequate screening and buffering of the special use will be provided if needed. There is no required buffering or screening for wildlife pets. However, there is a lot of natural flora out there that would provide some natural buffering. Special use will not have any signs or exterior lighting that will cause glare, adversely impact area traffic safety, or have a negative effect on the area. No signs or lighting are proposed for the addition of wildlife pets. There are no undue risks to persons or property from hazardous substances. There are no expected risks or hazardous substances with the keeping of wildlife pets. The proposed special use will not adversely impact the general public health, safety, and wellness of the residents of Putnam County. An application may not be denied on the basis unless the zoning board of adjustment makes findings as to the specific manner in which the proposed use would have such an adverse effect. The applicant has verbally stated that he intends to not only meet, but exceed the Florida Wildlife Commission standards for the keeping of wildlife pets to ensure the safety of nearby residents. There's no evidence that the special use will adversely affect the general public health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Putnam County. The applicant has requested a special use permit to allow wildlife pets. Staff finds that the application and proposed use meets the criteria for a special use permit and recommends approval with the following conditions. Firstly, the applicant will be required to meet all conditions stated in the Land Development Code and any conditions added by the zoning board of adjustment. And the applicant must obtain all appropriate licensing and permits required by the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and all animal enclosures and improvements to the property must get the required permits from Putnam County Planning and Zoning Department and/or Putnam County Building Department, and any animal enclosures on the property must meet an increased fifty-foot setback required from all property lines. Questions?
Do we, questions for staff? Okay, before we continue, I know you introduced yourself as an intern, but I don't think- Did you say your name?
I'm so sorry, I don't recall if I do, my name is Leslie Sims.
Okay, that's all, just to identify the staff, thank you. Okay, so there's no questions for staff, okay? At this time, let's do a site visit roll call.
Yes.
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 Okay, at this time, we will have the applicant to come forward, Mr. Gillette. Please identify yourself, name and address.
My name is Christopher Gillette, I live at one thirty-eight Charity Lane.
Okay, do you want to expound upon what the staff had to say, or?
Uh, yeah, so, um, they had said I have extensive, uh, you know, experience in this field. I just wanted to tell you guys a little bit about myself as well, just in case you hadn't seen it on the, um, on the paper there. So, I just moved up here, and previous to that, I've been the manager at Everglades Holiday Park for their alligator area for the last five years, and so I've ran their entire alligator program there. And that's their Class Two and One wildlife there for crocodilians. I've worked at many of the different facilities here, or not here, I'm used to being in South Florida. In South Florida, for many years, I've spent my entire life, born and raised in Florida, handling alligators and crocodiles. I work with them both here in Florida, and then also internationally as well. I'm called upon to visit at different facilities in other countries to help them train their staff and their wildlife there as well. And I used to work for the University of Florida and their herpetology department for the croc dogs, going out and live capturing alligators and crocodiles as part of monitoring programs. So, I've spent my entire life working in this field, and I'm considered to be one of the top people in this field.
Any questions for Mr. Gillette? Mr. Fisher?
So you are raising alligators there, or what? What are, what are the animals that you're, that you're gonna be having on the property?
Right, so this permit, the special use permit would be for Class One and Two wildlife as it is explained by Florida Fish and Wildlife. So that would include alligators and crocodiles and caiman. And so those are crocodilians as a whole, but yeah. So, I have a few different plans of what I am hoping to be able to do over time, but right now, the idea is to be able to just get our alligators. I work as an alligator rescuer as well, so the nuisance alligators we have here in Florida that are typically shot. What I've done down south is I've worked with organizations down there where we try to save them instead of having them killed and put them into captivity. And so I want to try to continue those alligator rescue efforts up here.
Mr. Gillette, can you tell us what kind of animals you currently have on the property?
So we currently have several Class Three animals, which is a fifty-dollar permit from FWC, so anybody can have that, it doesn't require anything extra. So, just yesterday, we just rescued a huge, like, two-hundred-pound Solcata tortoise, which is just this massive thing, you guys may have seen it on the news, it came out of Daytona. So I've done animal rescue as well, not just the big stuff like the gators and crocs, but my girlfriend and I have run a wildlife rescue, or exotic animal rescue for many years. And so we have, on the property right now, we've got like a dozen parrots, we have a toucan, we've got a couple hornbills, which is like the bird from The Lion King, if you guys remember that, zazu. And we have a coatamundi, which is like a cousin of a raccoon. And we have two rescue pigs, pot-bellied pigs. And we have two rescue foxes right now, they're called a fennec fox, it's an African fox species. And so we just try to rescue these small exotic animals and give them a home.
So most of the animals that you have are animals that people, that people used to own and no longer can take care of?
Yeah, the majority of the animals that we have are either pets that were surrendered to us when somebody could no longer take care of them, such as the tortoise we just received, or animals that are found that have escaped from somebody, or were loose, or anything like that. Like, we have several smaller tortoises that were found wandering around in Miami. They'd get out of people's yards, something like that, so we have several of those guys. One of the foxes was found hiding underneath a truck. So, yeah, we take in all these different kinds of animals and try to give them a home.
Any other questions for Mr. Gillette? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I saw some people's hands were raised, but I'm gonna ask if anyone in the audience wishes to come forward and speak in favor of this application. Alright, no one's coming forward? In favor? Okay, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Jim Cook, I live at one thirty, Charity Lane, Interlochen, Florida. I was down at his house today, and all those little critters that he's talking about, I was petting them on the cheek, ear, nothing down there, it was dangerous. The turtle wasn't, I mean, it was a turtle, there was nothing there. That place is surrounded by deer leases, where people come there, kill deer every year. Last year, I had the neighbor's dog come on my property, killed two hundred and fifty chickens, okay? So all this goes on, an ambulance had to come get me, the paramedics to take me to hospital. These people that are against it, they don't call in about that, okay? But yet, this guy's trying to save animals, and they're wanting to defeat him. So that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this application? Okay, no one's coming forward. Okay, anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition? There was a couple of people who had their hands up, that were sworn in. Come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kim Sykes.
Wait a minute till you get to the podium.
My name is Kim Sykes, I live at one fifty-two Charity Lane. My property directly connects to Mr. Gillette's.
Okay, please speak into the mic.
I'm trying.
Okay.
Is that better?
That's better, thank you.
Did you get the address and name?
Yes, I think-
Okay.
Did you get it, Jenny? Okay.
Okay. So I think Mr. Gillette spoke on most of my concerns, and I honestly have some objections to Mrs. Ratliff ruling on this being she's associated with him. Seems a little favoritism to me. But my concerns are not with the small rescue animals that are on-site at this time, and maybe possible others in that class. I'm an animal lover myself, so that doesn't matter to me. The alligators are a different situation. Nuisance alligators are removed from areas for a reason. And not only does he want to give them a home, he wants to train them and do shows with them and be the largest alligator sanctuary in the state of Florida. You know, they do underwater tours, and that's what they've stated they wish to do on this site. I think they've already spoken with someone about digging out the pond that's wetlands in the area. I guess to house some alligators. Snakes, I think he has some plan of housing a quantity of snakes that he's gonna build a house for, and I get the regulations. I guess we didn't get FWC on-site for questioning today. So, just the, the fact that we live in a small rural area, and the, the road, the easement that you spoke of for, you know, ingress and egress, is another thing. We have a small dirt trail, it's fifteen feet wide drive, so it's not really equipped to take on commercial use, which they do plan to do. This is not just to bring in animals for their, taking care of the animals. They plan to do private tours, at this time, they say private tours, and so that's, you're talking more traffic on our road. Cousin Town Road isn't also the best either, I have some pictures of it, the conditions of it right now, just with the little bit of rain that we've had, much less if you have hurricanes. And also, the pond that he wants to dig out, when you have two or three hurricanes that we've had, like, back-to-back in before, ends up joining my pond, the pond that I live on. So, you know, like I said, you're getting into water management, and I think there's been some contact and conversation with them also. Then there again, you get hurricanes, you get fires, you get floods, and I don't know if you guys have addressed anything that has to do with that. Emergency, you know, evacuations or anything that may have to happen in the event of that, and you have a large amount of alligators and reptiles, dangerous animals on-site that you have to deal with. And I know you said it's not gonna affect our property values, but, you know, unless you're a big animal lover, I don't know who's gonna wanna come and buy my house right next door, when you got however many said alligators possibly, you know, right next door. I don't know that they will, I don't know that they won't, so I don't know how you guys, or someone can say that there's no evidence that they won't, 'cause there's no evidence, you know, that it won't affect it, in my opinion. So, just, I think it should be looked at more, the, the safety of all of this, where they're going down the road, maybe not with this permit, or this, you know, ordinance, but down the road with the massive amounts of alligators and reptiles they plan to have, or wish to have, and the, you know, intrusion from the public on our properties, our land.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Do we have another one, someone else in the audience wishing to come forward and speak in opposition? Come forward, please. Uh, you have to be sworn in, if you didn't raise your hand to be sworn in? Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Austin Bradley, and I live at one eighty-four Charity Lane, which directly connects to his. I know y'all had a, there was a sign about a fence. I guess that was granted, or, I mean, we haven't heard anything else about that, so we really don't know what is going on. And then now, all of a sudden, we've got another sign, so, or, you know, he's already got animals on, and I like him. I've met him, no issues at all, but there's already animals on the property, there's no fence. So what's keeping them animals from adjoining with the other animals that are already there? So, you have foxes from god knows where, mating with foxes that we already have, then what do you have? I have a four-year-old son. We have twenty acres that butts up to his. The last thing I want is a crocodile in my yard. Everybody could agree with that. And the incident with the two hundred and fifty chickens, that was false. I am part of that hunting club, I was there that day, I know what happened. And the guys in the hunting club were all for the fence. If that's what they wanna do, that's awesome. But the whole alligator thing, and venomous snakes, we don't want a petting zoo. That's why we moved to the middle of nowhere to be left alone. And raise our kids the best way we can, obviously, y'all know that's, that's hard to do nowadays. I'm thirty-two years old, actually, today is my birthday. And the last thing I want is something happening to my kids, or my neighbor's kids. Now, if we wanna go to a petting zoo, we go to a petting zoo in the city, not in the middle of nowhere. The traffic on Charity Lane is already terrible. As of right now, I am the only one that has tried to do anything, other than the gentleman in the back, he has helped me, and several people have given me money for diesel, and we had Rock called in, we've done several things. But we like it the way it is, and we don't want the extra traffic. Like I said, again, we have kids, small kids, and that's just not the place for it.
Any questions for Mr. Bradley?
May I include a comment? I just feel it's important to mention that administrative variance was granted for an eight-foot-tall fence around twenty acres of the property where the applicant intends to keep all of the enclosures. So there will be enclosures and an eight-foot fence around the property and animals.
Well, with that being said, my twenty acres has went from hand to hand to hand to hand over the years. All that property has, there's barbed wire fences stretching for miles. There is no way possible to keep a fence up unless you have one person, that that's all they do, especially an eight-foot fence in the middle of the woods. Every time the wind blows, I have trees in my yard, trees on my property, trees on Charity Lane. Mr. Brian back here behind me, he, he cuts them down just about once a week, or cuts them up laying in the middle of the road. So, that, that's totally fine to have an eight-foot- So, that, that's totally fine to have an eight-foot fence, but keeping it up is the issue. And, like I said, I don't want to have a crocodile in my front yard, I mean, 'cause my little boy's four, he's gonna think it's cool, then what happens? So, I think that's it.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
But anyone else that was sworn in would like to come forward and speak in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lori Nemick.
Pull down your, thank you.
My name is Lori Nemick, and I live at 183 Charity Lane, of Interlock in Florida, 32148. And, um, I wrote up a speech last night with some facts that I have, um, I would like to start at the beginning if it's okay with you?
Okay, okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, my name is Lori Nemick, my husband and I purchased our property of 183 Charity Lane of Interlock in Florida of November of 2018. This is the end of the road of past Mr. Garrett's property of 138 Charity Lane of Interlock in Florida, which he purchased on March 16th, 2023. And I'm speaking against the wildlife pet special use application. My concern states that the posting of a bouncing started, five, my concern started at the posting of a bouncing of the fence. On June 16th of 2023, I wrote a letter to Putnam County Planning and Zoning with my concern. I received a response from Mr. Joseph Carey. His letter states, which I have a copy, "The administrative variance for fence will not grant the applicant the privilege of keeping alligators and other wildlife pets on his property." At this time, the letter was written by Mr. Garrett, has already had some of the wildlife pets on his property, post video online and social media. The appliance does not have a bona fide agricultural use for the Putnam County approval. In my understanding, that to have a farm ad, the land cannot be used for development investment purposes. So please clarify, the intent of using zoning alone ad will allow special use permit, the bona fide agricultural will not determine the outcome as standard in the notice from Mr. Jacory Baker about the administrative variance for the fence that was written on May 27th of 2023. And please also clarify whether reptiles and alligators are considered agricultural in the state of Florida. Versus on the application of administrative variance, Mr. Garrett applied on May 5th of 2023. Also, on the date of June 16th of 2023, Mr. Garrett had previously, on June 5th of 2023, applied for zoning for special use permit. The public signs were posted on July 7th of 2023 in the evening after 5:00 p.m. I feel like Mr. Garrett is misrepresenting his intention use of his property. For his applicant, application, that specifically states tour pond, gas parking, farm pond, crocodile pond, and et cetera for touring, also stated on video, online, and social media, what is he asking for, intending for special use permit? Pets are personal care and not used for tours to visit or to be displayed. Another concern, has anyone from the zoning department been to the property and questioned for review? Concerns also for keeping wildlife fence and protecting our children and neighborhood. We live on a residential maintained road, not a county maintained road. The extra traffic coming to his property were heating on ingress and egress to our home. Also, the increase of traffic that he is proposing to bring degrade the road in future condition where Mr. Garrett be responsible for the upkeep or the maintenance to the road. I am concerning the stability of my family and access to and from our property. My family and I only have one way in and one way out. Thank you for your time and your consideration in the matter of our concern for our community.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Randy McLamb, 1102 Cousin Town Road. Uh, I guess I'm not really, uh, in opposition of it. Um, to tell you the truth, I don't care what the man does on his own property, as long as it's all contained to his property. Um, yeah, welcome to the area, if nobody's told you.
Please, please address us, okay?
Well, that's my only concern. Um, my only concern is traffic, additional traffic. Again, what he does on his property is his business, as long as it's all contained to his property. So, that's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay, any questions for Mr. McLamb? Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to come forward? Mr. Gillette, do you have any concerns that you would like to address from the citizens, or are you okay?
If you would, without a question.
Yes, if you'd like to, anything rebuttal?
Um, a lot of, I wish this was taller. So, excuse my posture as I try to speak into it. A lot of people are concerned about animals being able to escape and things like that. Uh, so Florida Fish and Wildlife regulations are some of the strictest in the nation. Um, actually, many other states are wishing to follow FWC, that's Florida Fish and Wildlife's, uh, regulatory practices for being able to contain animals. As I'm sure we're aware, uh, Florida has a contentious history with invasive species, and so the FWC has had a very strong response to the invasive species issue in Florida, and so their regulatory practices are way over and above any other state as far as containment goes. So for any of my animals to be able to escape the property, they would not only have to escape an enclosure fence, which is going to be, again, above and beyond what FWC's requirement is, uh, then would also have to escape the eight-foot perimeter fence as well. So that's two separate fence lines that would have to get through to be able to get out. Um, so, that would be extremely difficult, um, and I don't know of that, as far as I know, off the top of my head, I don't know of that having happened at any other facility so far in pertains to crocodilians. Um, now, somebody had asked about the animals I already have currently, um, you know, like I stated previously, the animals that I currently have are Class III, anybody can get them, uh, they're all animals that can be bought at an exotic pet store or something like that, and they're all rescue animals that were bought at exotic pet stores. So, uh, these animals do not require any other, uh, regulation at all, so I think somebody was concerned about them being, about me already having them ahead of having this permit. This permit would be for Class I and II wildlife, uh, the animals I currently have are Class III wildlife. And if I was in violation there, FWC would have very quickly already given me a citation on that, um, of which I have a completely clear record with them. Um, and as far as those animals go, none of them are considered dangerous, which is why, again, they're Class III, you know, so they're, they're open for anybody to own, uh, they're not considered to be dangerous animals. As far as the traffic goes, um, this hearing right now is for that, uh, wildlife and pets, uh, we will move forward, and I do have other plans that will have other hearings, which I'm, you guys are gonna get to know me well, okay? I have, uh, other plans that I plan on doing down the line, and, uh, when we get to those ones, we can speak on those, um, and, uh, you know, anybody has any complaints about any of the further plans we have, you know, we'll meet those, uh, when we get to that bridge, right? Uh, but as far as the traffic goes, um, again, we will have to have other meetings for the tourism I plan to have in the future, but it is, uh, VIP tours is what I do. So the tourism I currently do down south, I do an underwater gator tour, uh, I have an average of, I wanna say, maybe eight people a week is what I run on that tour. So, eight people within a week, maybe eight extra cars coming down the road is what I currently have as far as my tourism goes. I don't see that as being something that is going to be vastly detrimental to the roads and, and what we have here. Um, and if you would wish to see, I can actually bring up and show you, um, the, uh, tour appointments, if you would like to check it yourself, and I can show you how many people a week I actually have do my tour. It's not very many. It's, uh, it's, again, it's an expensive, high-end VIP tour, so it's not high-traffic at all. Um, any questions on that?
Any questions for Mr. Gillette? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, since we've heard from everyone, we will close this portion of the meeting to the public and open it up for board motion and discussion.
Madam Chairman, I move the approved special use permit 23-00007, as it meets the criteria for special use permit as required by Section 45-1083 of Putnam County Land Development Code, with the four conditions recommended by staff, and authorize the chairman to sign the final order.
All right, okay, Mr. Fisher or Mr.?
Take your pick.
You can give, okay. All right, we have a motion and second to approve special use permit 23-00007. Any further discussion? All of those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four, five. Motion carries five zero. Uh, there is a appeal, an appeal process, and you have 30 days, uh, it must be appealed to the circuit court. So, good luck in your endeavor, and thank you very much. Okay, do we have any old business?
Minutes.
Yep, the minute, the new business, right. And, uh, the next on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes for June 21st, 2023. Everybody had a chance to read them?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All of those in favor, say aye.
Motion second.
Motion second, right. Okay. Earl, right.
Earl.
All right, anything else?
He said it just before me.
He did. Okay, I guess motion to adjourn.